Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. George. Dr. Locke. Here. Hearing the visitors, part one, we're able to come up to the podium and discuss anything or ask questions about anything on the agenda. I'd like to move for the adoption of resolution number 224, the approval of minutes.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That passes your hands. So, is there a report?
No report.
Education and planning, Mrs. Mayes?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, Dr. Pepper for educational programs.
It gives me great pleasure, at this point in time, to recognize one of our teachers who actually teaches at Bagley Elementary School, and that is Ann Brandt. Ann, um, was just offered a Fulbright Distinguished Awards in Teaching Grant to Finland by the United States Department of State and the J. William Fulbright Foreign, excuse me, Foreign Scholarship Board. Annie is one of forty-nine U.S. citizens who will be traveling abroad next school year, the two thousand and fifteen school year. Recipients of this award are selected on the basis of academic and professional achievement, as well as demonstrated leadership potential. And if any of you know Annie, or have had the opportunity to speak with Annie, that is absolutely what she signifies. At this point in time, I would like Annie to come forward and talk a little bit about the process, because it was a very long, grueling, stressful, anxious process that she, um, had to go through uh, for the application and for the nomination. But we are extremely proud of her, and we wish to recognize her this evening. However, she knows, and it is one of the requirements of receiving a scholarship grant, that she will be coming back in the spring of two thousand and sixteen and sharing her experience, late spring, I should say, sharing her experience, as well as working with other staff members in our district. So, at this time... Can I call her Annie Brandt, maybe I should say Ann Brandt.
Thank you for having me this evening, um, and also just a big thank you to the administrative staff, because they've been very supportive with me throughout this entire process of applying for the Fulbright Grant. Um, when I first learned about the Grant, it was actually a year before this application process was due, and I didn't quite have time to get everything ready. Um, so I had a whole year to sort of think about the kinds of things that I would want to study when I put together my proposal. Um, the application process for this year's cycle started in the fall, but as I said, I spent a great deal of time thinking about the types of things that I might want to study. Um, I started with the very extensive application, it included a lot of essays. Also, um, there was a component where we had to come up with a research proposal that was very detailed, come up with a timeline of what it is that we would be researching and where we would be doing the research. Um, and eventually, through the process, as I went through each round, I did find out that I was a finalist, and at that point, I had to prepare for an interview with the committee. Um, again, through the process, every time I notified my neighbor Georgia or camera Cindy, um, they were all so supportive and so helpful, offering any kind of help that I needed to prepare for this. Um, that's really not surprising to me. I feel like one of our missions as a school district is to support lifelong learners, to develop lifelong learners, and that's not something that we do just for our students, but I feel that that's something that's always really been encouraged from staff members also. Several years ago, as a speech therapist in the district, I determined that sometimes it's difficult to get the professional development that really applies to what it is I do in my position. Um, so I decided that I wanted to come up with a discussion group for county school-based SLPs, and as soon as I showed like who was principal at the time, and Cindy about this idea, they were one hundred percent on board, um, we developed this group, and probably about four years ago, we started pretty small, but in the last four years, we've grown to include eighteen different school districts across through counties. Um, we have about twenty members that kind of filter in and out each month when we do our professional development activities. And really participating and leading that furnace kind of what led me to decide what it is that I wanted to study with this program. Um, as I said, I've learned about the Fulbright program, and I thought it would be a great opportunity to continue to study this type of thing. And just, so to give you a little bit more of an understanding about the program, the mission is to share best educational practices internationally while creating, um, greater global competence for students and teachers. So that's the mission of the Fulbright Distinguished Award Teaching Program. Uh, the components of the program that I'll be doing as I participate would be, in my placement in Finland, I'll be completing some coursework at the university level, I will lead some master's level seminars, I'll observe in local schools, and also complete the research project that I designed as a part of the application process. My research will really be focusing on, out of my mouth, improving interdisciplinary team training for the use of multi-sensory environments for students with special needs. Um, really the things that I want to focus on when I'm studying in Finland, first would be to study how training impacts practice. So what is it that we're doing in training that actually translates to what teachers and other professionals are doing in their classrooms? I would like to continue to improve development and delivery of professional development activities, not just for teachers, but for speech therapists, occupational therapists, physical therapists, because it really does take a team effort. And finally, I think, just learning from the best practices in the countries that I'll be in, I'm really excited to do that, and I feel like the opportunity to go is, is going to be incredible, and I feel like there'll be a lot of information that I can bring back and share here, not just through the district, but through the county, um, and also through my participation in my national organization, which is the Americans, which I'm a cheerleading organization. Um, thank you guys again, everyone, for really creating a culture here in Lakefront that supports this type of pursuit. Um, very appreciative of the opportunity, and thank you.
Congratulations. That's a huge thing. It's a huge thing. We're very honored to have one of our staff be a Fulbright's member. That's a fabulous.
Having worked with Mrs. Brandt, I took my time at Bagley, I remember when she called me and told me she was going to apply for this, and she said to me, "It's a long shot." I'm telling you without a doubt, in my mind, having worked with her for four years, I knew she would get this, because she's bright, she's articulate, she is at the top of her field, that's just who you are. I had no doubt in my mind that she would get it. One of forty-nine, this would surprise me though.
And Ann, would you please pay attention to all of the educational best practices while you're there? Because I am so tired of reading about how grateful I am, I want to know how grateful I am. Okay?
Thank you. Is that all you have, Dr. George?
Yes, it is. Thank you again, and congratulations again, Annie. We look forward to next year this time.
I will move for adoption of resolution number two hundred and twenty-five to approve the Dr. Robert Keller charter school for you. Second. It's been moved in second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That vote passes your hands. I move for adoption of resolution number two hundred and twenty-six to accept two tuition students for the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and seventeen school year. Second. It's been moved in second. Any questions or comments? All for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that vote passes your hands.
I would like to bundle resolutions number two twenty-seven, which is to approve the Presley Bridge Special Education Contracts, and two twenty-eight to approve the E-CAP Academy number, I don't have understanding, between GLST and GLEA for the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen school year, and two twenty-nine to approve the partial hospitalization services contract filed out by Education Services.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that vote passes your hands.
And I move for adoption of resolution number two hundred and thirty, to approve the Pennsylvania Usability Distribution.
Second. It's been moved in second. Any comments?
I'm curious what this is. I'm sure it's something we go down and read a little bit. It's a clarification.
Technically, the doctor sold us, she was speaking to this, but I'm happy to speak to this. Several years ago, in fact, when I was former assistant principal as well as principal, we had administered the PAU survey, um, to assess the nature of at-risk behaviors amongst our students. And what it does is it provides us with baseline data, and we had in the past, actually, um, we were able to track the cohort of students, so if the students took the survey in their sophomore year, and then again their senior year, we could see if there was a decrease in at-risk behaviors. And what we did find, the last time that we had done this and administered it with our seniors who had been given the PAU survey formally as sophomores, was, um, with the implementation of our prevention programs, there had been a delay in engaging in these at-risk behaviors. Do we still have at-risk behaviors, um, use of drugs, alcohol, sexual activity? Unfortunately, yes we do. However, the data clearly stated that the students were, um, you know, waiting a longer time if they were, um, becoming involved in these behaviors. We had the opportunity, had the opportunity to participate again, um, we feel it's very important, not just to see, uh, the data from our students, but to see if the programs that we have pertaining to prevention are effective, and if they're reaching our students.
When did the new survey?
I don't have the answer for that.
They do have a class?
I believe it's in the fall. In the past, I can tell you how we did this in the past, the surveys given, typically homeroom was extended ten minutes, because the survey does not take more than a twelve-minute, fifteen-minute period of time. Um, when we had done it at the high school, and Mr. Wachowski, he might be able to speak to this as well, we extended homeroom a little bit into the first period, our career technology center students got on the bus ten, fifteen minutes late, and that's only a minute today. Right?
Yes.
I'm sure that's probably the plan again.
Yes.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that vote also passes your hands.
And I move for adoption of resolution number two hundred and thirty-one to approve the Westmoreland County Community College Dual Enrollment Program Agreement.
Second. It's been moved in second. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that vote passes your hands.
And on the next curriculum committee meeting date is Tuesday, August eleventh, at five-thirty here in the CSC. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mayes. I'm Ms. Spitter.
Thank you. I'd like to bundle together resolution number two thirty-two to approve the transfer report, number two thirty-three to approve the payment of bills, and number two thirty-four to approve the budgetary transfer, and move for adoption together.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that vote passes your hands.
And I'd like to move for adoption of resolution number two thirty-five, the appointment of the Act five-11 tax collectors.
Second. It's been moved in second. Any comments? All for, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that vote passes your hands.
And I'd like to move, bundle together resolution number two thirty-six, the designation of depositories for two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, and two thirty-seven, authorization to invest funds for two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and sixteen.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that vote passes your hands.
And I'll move for adoption of resolution number two thirty-eight, to approve two thousand and sixteen Commercial Real Estate Tax Assessment Appeals Program.
Second. It's been moved in second. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that vote passes your hands.
And I'll move for adoption of resolution number two thirty-nine, to reappoint the school district treasurer for two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen.
Second. It's been moved in second. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that vote passes your hands.
And I'll move for adoption of resolution number two hundred and forty, the adoption of the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen General Fund Propose Final Operating Budget. And, um, in the amount of fifty-three million, four hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and seven-two dollars.
Second. It's been moved in second. Any questions or comments?
I think it should be said that we had a presentation last week, um, going through the elements of the budget, um, and what's up, what's down, what might change, what probably won't change, and, um, that's why we're simply moving it at the motion at this point.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that vote passes your hands.
And I'll move for adoption of resolution number two hundred and forty-one, to maximize the school breakfast and lunch prices, which will be unchanged.
Second. Moving second. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And that vote passes your hands.
Thank you. And the next final committee meeting will be Wednesday, June third, at ten a.m. at the Allen Building. I move for the, uh, thank you, there's a report. Under legislative, I move for the adoption of resolution number two forty-two, to approve the resolution urging legislative action on school employee pension reform, and even though it is lengthy, I'm going to reiterate because it's a step. Um, resolved, whereas in the coming fiscal year, school officials must figure out how to pay employee pension obligations with the total employer contributions for two thousand and fifteen, sixteen projected by the public school employee retirement system at three-point four million. And whereas, beginning in July two thousand and fifteen, the annual employer contribution rate that must be paid by school districts can jump to twenty-five-point-eight-four percent from twenty-one-point-forty percent in two thousand and fourteen, fifteen, and will continue to climb to a staggering thirty-two point twenty-three percent by two thousand and nineteen, twenty-one. And whereas, the increase in the employer contribution shown in the Greater Luttrell School District's projected expenditures for the next five years could cost extraordinary costs as follows. Year two thousand and fifteen to sixteen is a little under six million, two thousand and sixteen to seventeen will be seven million, two thousand and seventeen to eighteen will be over seven million, two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and nineteen will be a little under eight million, and two thousand and nineteen to twenty, uh, two thousand and twenty will be over eight million dollars. Whereas, understanding that pension costs are taking a greater share of available revenues, leaving less funding for true basic education costs directed toward student learning, these projections present critical problems that effectively force the addition of significantly higher financial burdens on taxpayers, school districts, and the Commonwealth, and consequently demand both a short-term and long-term solution. And whereas, a meaningful solution to these problems must involve the identification of another funding source for teachers, decreasing or cutting the cost liabilities of the system, including benefit levels and deferring the system's liabilities. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Greater Luttrell School District calls upon the General Assembly to begin immediate consideration of school employee pension reform with the dual purpose of reducing projected employer contribution rate increases over the next five years, and reducing projected costs to school districts, taxpayers, and the Commonwealth over the next two decades, while maintaining an appropriate pension benefit to employees. And be it for a resolve that a copy of this resolution be submitted to the elected senators and representatives of the Greater Luttrell School District in the General Assembly and to the Governor of Pennsylvania.
Second. It's been moved in second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And that vote passes your hands. Property and supply, Mrs. Spitter?
Thank you. I move for the adoption of resolution number two forty-three to award the bid for giving repairs in light and in detail.
Second. It's been moved in second. Any comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that vote passes your hands.
And our next part of the supply committee meeting will be June fourth, three-thirty.
Thank you, Mrs. Spitter. Student activities and recreation, um, our spring recognition night will be Wednesday, May twenty-seventh, so next Wednesday, seven p.m., here in the Senior High Auditorium, and, uh, the girls lacrosse team is still in the home. Um, next athletic committee meeting is scheduled to be determined in the day. Community relations, Dr. George?
Dr. George.
Westmoreland Intermediate Unit, Mrs. Mayes.
Thank you. There's the summary of the WIU Special Word Meeting Minutes, um, that was held on May fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen, attached. It was basically just to, um, clarify a couple of things in the lease agreement for the Luttrell School. And the next WIU committee meeting is Tuesday, May twenty-sixth, at seven-thirty p.m. in the WIU building.
Thank you, Mrs. Mayes. EWCTC joint operating committee, Mrs. Spitter?
Thank you. I move for the adoption, adoption resolution number two forty-four to approve the EWCTC Joint Area Board HVAC renovation project as a list.
Second. It's been moved in second. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And that vote passes your hands.
And our next EWCTC joint operating committee meeting will be Wednesday, May seventh, seven-thirty. Oh, and also, this may remind me, um, the senior recognition night for EWCTC students will be here on May twenty-sixth, Tuesday, at seven p.m. in the Ossie Road.
Play a committee. Thank you, Mrs. Spitter. Or policies, Mrs. Spitter?
Yes, um, we don't have a resolution for these, but, uh, I invite you to go along and read the final changes that have been made to policies number three oh seven, six oh nine, and then, um, the eight nineteen and the eight nineteen A are new policies that are being added to meet the change in legislation in the state legislature. So, um, we will have, um, a resolution to adopt those on first reading at our June fourteenth.
Thank you, Mrs. Spitter. Training rotation, Mrs. Mayes?
Number four.
Technology, Mrs. Palmer?
Number four.
Supervision recommendations?
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number two forty-five, which is the creation of the supervisor of student support services, K to twelve position.
So moved.
It's been moved in second. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those? And that vote passes your hands.
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number two forty-six, which is the approval of the employee benefit and pay plans effective July first, two thousand and fifteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And that vote passes your hands.
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number two forty-seven, which is the resignations of the assistant resident coach, Richard Zabatski, the resident first assistant coach, Chad Schmeling, and language arts teacher at Junior High School, Rachel Upsenica, and we appreciate her service to the district. She is leaving, uh, her husband took another position, um, and she's been with the district several years, and we appreciate all of the service that she's provided to bring to the trust.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And that vote passes your hands.
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number two forty-eight, which is to approve retroactively to May eleventh, Connor Coke, um, as a summer student worker.
It's moved. Second. It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that vote passes your hands.
And I'd ask the board to move on resolution number two forty-nine, which is the personnel appointments supplemental that are listed.
Second. So moved. It's been moved in second. Any comments?
I've got a question. I'm noticing that we have, uh, two women are going to be girls' first assistant and have another job as assistants in junior high. How is that possible?
I couldn't, I don't know that. The, uh, the seventh and eighth grade girls' basketball plays in the fall, uh, and the regular basketball season is going to leave away for those.
That's great, uh.
Thank you for clearing that up, Mr. Spitter. It's been moved in second. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And that vote passes your hands.
Um, the other business, all of the events that are coming up are listed, um, please review, and if you can attend any of them, there are always a lot of nice events during the year. I would like to note that there is a points committee meeting, um, in the school board on June third, third, at four forty-five, and we would like to have a short athletic committee meeting immediately after that, so I wanted to note that about the athletic committee meeting, um, at that point. Um, and the board meeting dates, if you note, are June ninth and June sixteenth, the committee is a whole meeting, and the regular board meeting is June. And just to note also that in July, we only have one board meeting, and that is July twenty-first, um, at seven thirty. And I would like to point out the wood shop projects are out in the other room, so we took a look, and there's some really beautiful pieces out there, so another thing that can be found, I'm sure, and the teachers definitely.
What you said off the next athletic committee meeting. Could you repeat that?
We have a points committee meeting scheduled, the points committee of the board, which is June third at four forty-five. Dr. Hauser and Dr. Locke are on that. Mr. Mears asked, there were two items that the athletic committee needed to discuss, and he wanted me to note, if possible, that we have a short athletic committee meeting after the points meeting, which isn't exclusive of you. Um, so that is proposed.
And when is that?
June third is.
I got you there. You've got one meeting at four forty-five, and next you just follow.
Six.
Oh, I follow.
No, it's across the country. And that way you have to. And I will inform that with Mr. Mears. I just wanted to mention it because of the.
If there's nothing else, I'd like to. Hi, Doc.
I'd like to remind the board members about the Memorial Library Spring Event, which is being held, um, Friday, the twenty-second, at seven p.m. Uh, the honoree for this year is Dave Arnold, who has done a lot for the library, is a member of the library board, and is also a member of the board of the Luttrell Partners in Education Foundation. And it's always a very nice event, always held on the Friday of Memorial Day weekend, and other than that, I wish you all happy Memorial Day.
I'd like to move for the adoption of resolution number two hundred and. I'd like to move for the adoption of resolution number two hundred and fifty. All voters. I would, um, hearing the visitors, part two, if anybody can come to the podium and speak. Now, I move for the adoption of resolution number two fifty, order. It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Really? That's a great thing. That's the greatest thing. That's the greatest thing to set up.